Do you remember where we stayed last year? Was that the Marriott?
I stayed with some friends up there.
I don't know where I stayed.
I don't remember. They moved it out of the cook. Was it just not big enough?
No, I did stay at the Captain Cook last year.
It's not because I have subsequently a whole work meeting next week and trying to arrange everyone's hotels there. Normally we stay at the cook because we have a great deal there. I'm like going there. Of course, AML makes sense.
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah, yeah.
We're all midtown.
And the audio is on right now so they can hear us.
That we aren't.
Are we YouTubeed already too?
Yes.
We'll hear about it if we're not. You'll let us know. I don't know.
We want to unmute it for a couple minutes here. Not to call the meeting.
You mean on the YouTube part?
You're watching.
Okay, it's muted.
You got it Susan, you're a pro.
Listen.
You ready? Do you record on? Okay, we'll call the city council public hearing of December fourth, twenty twenty four, six thirty to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Allison.
Here.
Tom Baylor.
Here.
Tom.
Yeah, I'm here.
It sounds like he's trying to talk. He's shutting up, I'm thinking, but we can't hear him.
Can you hear me?
Can't hear Dave either.
I can hear you Dave, but they can't. Yeah, I can hear you too, Tom.
See, that's not I know what I was doing.
Hang on guys, is there everybody out there? Physical difficulties?
Yep, you got it.
Oh, it's pretty high.
Tom, can you hear us?
Can you guys hear us?
Yeah, we can hear you. You must have us on mute.
Okay.
We got you now.
You can see soon. You're it.
Okay, I'm starting again. Mayor Allison.
Here.
Tom Baylor.
Here.
Kathy Sherman.
Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Wendy Rainey.
Here.
Dave Zastro.
Here.
Kristen Smith. That's it for now. And Ken Jones is absent for now. We have four? Yes.
Here, public hearing tonight is on the resolution twelve twenty four thirty six, which is setting fee schedule. Resolution twelve twenty four thirty seven, which is setting the budget, which includes the enterprise funds. And ordinance twelve twenty five. Uh transferring two hundred eighty nine thousand eight hundred ninety eight from permanent fund for the uh second street and what should road projects. I think all we have in the audience is staff. Um, nobody else in the audience, uh staff certainly welcome to comment if you want to, if you don't want to comment. Okay, we'll take a recess then until somebody comes in. I don't expect anybody probably, but uh till like six fifty. And then we'll see if anybody else wants to comment. We're recess.
We're gonna need at least six plus you, plus me.
Well, Kristen is. I just have to um and Ken and Kathy have told me that they're calling in, so.
Everybody has said.
Maybe they're not remembering.
We're anticipating there to be an. And if not, what's our course of action? Then the permanent fund doesn't happen until it goes, but that's the only thing we need.
We can.
We gotta have four votes for the other.
The other two, basically.
But if the permanent fund doesn't go.
Does that affect the function? Yeah. So we have a way to vote on both of those until we have.
Not necessarily, we just.
We can still approve the budget.
And I guess. As we do the sequencing, should should the permanent fund come before the budget then? Doesn't that approval?
I think it is on the regular. Mayor.
So Susan, you think we've been moved forward with the budget even if there's not seven people?
Yes, they do only need four.
No.
Four yeses. I would say yes, they still can approve the budget.
Except we don't have enough to vote moving the budget.
If we find, if if on the eighteenth you um.
Oh yeah, we still.
We still don't have approval of that ordinance. Um.
Oh, there is one more meeting.
Okay, we can have a special meeting before the end of the year, but otherwise the budget will go into effect as presented. So you can re-present it. If you want to, I guess. You know what I mean? If if you really feel strongly that that money isn't gonna come out of the permanent fund and you wanna find a way to take it out of the budget, that you can.
I've heard a lot of it. I know you think that's a whole.
I really fear that seven years because on the first vote, it might just be a matter of time until we can get seven in the room. But I wouldn't worry about it. And then you can amend the budget altogether once we're in the new year if you have to.
When do we have to pay those road projects?
Oh, they're later in them. They're later.
We'll tell them we'll pay that when you pay us our fish money.
Well, you're gonna have to pay them because we got our fish money.
But no, not all. We haven't got last year's, we haven't got this year's fish money, we got last year's fish money.
What did you make?
Well, I mean allocated this year's fish money.
The parents don't pay it until March.
Yeah.
All right. You just mean you hate that the state keeps it for like seven, eight months.
Yeah, but till, you know, the canaries pay it March and they don't pay us until October.
Yeah, yeah. So would you expect?
Anyway, so you got time. I think that that money is specifically for that project, so.
Are you having trouble with your council email?
Oh, I have to log in every time if I if I even if I even if I if I just go out of my browser and into something else and then back to my browser even though it stay open. Uh makes me.
You don't just have Outlook on your phone that you can just set up the account on?
Well, uh I don't have the Outlook setup. I use the web.
Oh.
I do have Outlook set up on these. I don't have any issues. I have the same issue. There's some, I've worked with R V K I P like three times now where your emails, just your emails, get deleted after twenty four hours. Start to go into my trash and go find your email, whether I've opened them or not.
Yeah, so Kristen has told me a few times that.
Just Susan, you know.
Just Susan. And so we went in and adjusted rule sets. We found that there was a rule set in there that called for that.
Now I'm trying to think who was council member before Heather. That was deleting my stuff.
I mean, it's pretty. Someone really had to intentionally go in there and do that. Because it was uh. Yeah, Clay or somebody before Clay maybe has a bunch of things going in that clutter. So I knew.
And again, I don't know how to do it.
It has some constraints on it where they do catch a lot of good junk. I'm glad. Then they.
Well, but I've got this kind of clutter. Your junk.
I know. It's it's like fifteen different names for it.
I don't really have full set up. That's my one. Little cork.
Quarantine.
But I know where to find it, so I don't even care.
Anyway, so Kristen has had trouble a couple of times.
That's the only problem.
Probably just the same thing.
Login every time, even though I asked you that question.
Kristen, do you use the Outlook app?
Uh, no, I just go through a web browser window.
I know.
Thank you for having your camera on Kristen. You have Dave. Thank you for having your camera on Kristen.
Wendy's sponsoring the new year about the requirement of video on Zoom. Especially she's going to AML, they're gonna write it for her.
Yeah, you can have that for your.
Doesn't mean you're gonna support.
Yeah, exactly. Nobody will support it.
Well, Kristen, I hate it, but.
I know what other places do for their.
Well, we we went some all all the different ways you can have your in-person attendance. We've done that right. Uh huh, well, there's tips of us now.
Okay. We are in recess during the public hearing if anybody's wondering. I think we figured it out.
I need to discuss the January first meeting and the pending agenda today.
Um.
Is it Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, yeah.
It's on, yeah. It's on holiday.
I mean, I'll be around after this here.
We probably have to face that circle pattern.
You betcha.
It went lighter than.
Do it all over again.
Think we can probably skip it. The one after is.
Yeah, well, you're only gonna have to deal with the seventh then too. Get information from the back of.
But yeah, that's what I mean. So I need to just have it on the second or the third or the week after because then what? They're only one week apart. It's kind of asshole.
Well, I guess it's been Christmas gift. What do you mean? First one ready.
Oh, yeah.
Unless there's some capacity.
Right, I'm I'm in. We already have stuff on eighteen. That we could take care of on the eighteen. That's like made an event. Other ordinance. I think I have the C I P list coming, it's on the second meeting. I have one of those that student shared business tax thing. And something else.
Do we have anything coming up on the following?
Oh, that that will be coming to me also for the eighteen. Always still be working on it. She's been doing all that work with the sales tax meeting with finance every few days and doing worksheets and pamphlets and things like that to really be ready to go ahead. But they all begin on the first, I guess. Can't even believe that. It's just the sales tax and probably that's the thing that I keep crossing in my head as to which one.
I wonder if that's that's.
He's here?
If you're right, okay.
Yes, and that was on. Yes, he's here. Put a little ad out to say that he might be around taking a few pictures. The assessors.
Oh, yeah, yeah, some. He came out to look at our cabinet.
The Giants. Who was who was playing today? Can't remember.
There's no.
Oh, no. What's today? Please Wednesday, yeah, tomorrow night.
They play the Lions.
Oh, yeah. It should be a good game. The Lions are pretty hot this year if they are.
They got thirteen players showing their defensive team that are on injured reserve.
They're what?
Thirteen of their players from the defensive side are on injured reserve, so they're hurting.
Sounds like San Francisco's team. They get a bunch on. Yeah, because they once played in the snow in Buffalo. Those are always the ones we play to. My high school, we played official games. With red bags on between our two pairs of socks.
Watch a lot of the whole.
Fall down at his friend's house and.
Big baskets packed. I'm like, well, Buffalo better win this game. Yeah, see San Francisco way out of their alley right now. And they said they they say they posted out to fans to come and shovel.
Yeah, yeah, I saw it. I saw a few of them were shoveling their seats.
But what did they say? Twenty bucks an hour and we'll pay you, you know, food and drinks, whatever.
It's a good deal.
I was gonna say. And then some like people.
Better than they score stuff all everywhere.
It's a pretty empty arena, bro.
Yeah. I think they had to shovel their own seats.
Yeah. But we got free beer out of them. Good deal.
The Giants are dropping. Kansas lost.
Kansas lost?
To Creighton, five rings. I did well. I like when teams have losses early because you don't want to.
They don't have losses really.
Yeah, they gotta learn that they're in a position to change their.
I mean, there's definitely a lot of undefeated teams, but we're there a lot of that built for them too. I don't care.
I'm sure it's episode.
I read for Duke.
Did Duke win?
No, they're playing.
There's a bunch of people.
I'm sorry.
I have a nice cabinet.
Yeah, oh yeah. I mean, I didn't have water. I just read by the wind, I went by two rows in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, that is the reason that.
Listen, Susan, she and they're all too fast.
Yeah.
No.
Just adjourned.
Okay, we'll come back in from recess. From our public hearing. We're still taking comments on fee schedule, the budget and the transfer from permanent fund. We've just added a staff member for those online. There there is no public here other than staff members, so. Last chance, anybody? Okay, seeing no public comments, we will adjourn the public hearing. Our regular meeting is seven. No, we're not.
Was there any interesting conversation?
No.
We didn't comment on football teams.
I've heard a lot of.
It's funny, somebody was said, really Susan.
I think it was pretty funny that Jerry goes, really, did that twenty four hours? Just yours.
Setting on. That's weird. What's it about?
Like that, but. I mean, I don't know how long it was in place, to be honest. I could see a beat before it too.
I wouldn't even know how to do that.
Tell they walked me through all.
Because there's a couple I wouldn't mind doing that.
I saw the rule sets. I'm like, okay, someone actually had to like intentionally, it didn't accidentally do this. But we changed the rule sets back and it's still.
Auburn is number two, seven and a half. That's a good plan right there. They've had a few. They've already lost to Kansas and.
Was it Kentucky or?
Yes, I can tell. They've lost to, yeah, so they've had they have a nice strong schedule early. My God.
Yeah.
You can't believe who's in the ACC now. West Coast teams. Really. For both. These two teams in the ACC. It's all about moving them, but they're not the Atlantic Coast Conference anymore. Rename them. I can put a picture of water out. If anybody giant's been walking. Everybody remember.
Walk over the water.
I know.
There is a large.
Yeah.
Nothing's wrong. No, as a matter of fact, yes, please do read.
For the third year. We've won the best water in the state.
And I until I moved here, I couldn't carry one. So I could drink it. And I hadn't been drinking it all over the world. And I moved here. And now I go anywhere else, I go to the water container.
They tried to go up my hill. And then he hit George's truck. It slid back down. I'm like, dude, no, the water coming in last winter. No, they always just call them now or Mark. Marcus or no, I don't know how it happened, but they never tried because that is like it's super steep and oh, glaring lights. I mean. How about they do it again? I've been stuck in the middle of the driveway and had to have sleep come toe me off the driveway. It was too slick. Then we used to like walking.
I get it on my screen. I never understand why people don't live on my, you know, choose to go on my screen.
That is super steep at the top too.
Well, there's a water leak on the other side too. From Becky, so there's always glare black ice going on the far side. Oh, it's very.
Is that water or?
It is water.
Groundwater, groundwater.
Well, she did have a leak at some point. I don't know if it got fixed, but. Every year inevitably there's people who come back into my house area. Unfortunately, there's always a mound of snow to shut and protect my house or Helen's house.
I would have to put it back in the front house. But and then all of a sudden. Waterhouse, city box. So you're just looking at white windows. Don't go out there.
Every year they kind of park down that Prince William and walk up.
I'm not really, I'm really telling you. English. Most of those new guys, they're.
Yeah.
Hey, we're.
Yes.
We will call the regular city council meeting December fourth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P M. to order, please stand and join me in pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Football, please.
Mayor Allison.
Here.
Tom Baylor.
Here.
Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Wendy Rainey.
Here.
Dave Zastro.
Here.
Kristen Smith.
Here.
And Ken Jones is absent. That is a quorum of council.
Any objection to the regular agenda presented? Hearing then that the agenda will be approved, any disclosures of conflicts of interest and ex parte communication? Hearing then, we'll move along to communications, body of judicial visitors, do you have no guest speakers? So audience comments regarding agenda items? Again, for those on the phone, there's staff. Here is all, several staff members. Okay, chairpersons and representative boards and commissions. I don't think there's anybody out there, but.
I've been sending them this and invite if they want to report, so they don't.
But we would see them there too.
Correct.
Okay, and we have no student council report. To the board, so the consent calendar is before you.
So I'll take the role on the consent calendar and the minutes, Casey Kinsman.
Yes.
Dave Zastro.
Yes.
Ken Jones is absent, Wendy Rainey.
Yes.
Tom Baylor.
Yes.
Kristen Smith.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
The consent calendar is good.
Hey, thank you, our minutes were in the consent calendar, we'd have no bids. Proposals or contracts, so reports of officers, mayor's report, I don't have any green pitch board for next week. I will give testimony for our resolution, I think it was proposal seventy-two maybe? The entry for.
Seventy-eight.
Resolution, whatever number it was there. That was the only one I intend to comment on, but I will attend most of those meetings. Any questions? City manager's report, Sam.
So first off, I'd really like to congratulate the water department, they're awesome as always for the third year in a row, they've won that RSL major water system excellence award. And it is an award that talks about, it's, they recognize exceptional performance, drinking water systems are evaluated for their efforts during. They've worn here and recognized in one of two major or minor, we got the major maintain four cart quarters of operator certificate compliance and have no open unresolved or incurred drinking water violations during their war year. Those guys do an amazing job, and not only do they do water, they also pursue, those guys are doing double time, and we should be very thankful that we have them, cause when the water doesn't work, it's not fun. Also, we got Fisheries Development Fund, it's seven hundred seventy-two thousand and some change. And we, it is in the bank, it is an amlet in earning interest, and there are no strings attached to these, this money, in the past it had had been used for a project for, that was fisheries related. This year, it can be used for less revenue, it's, there's no strings attached, so on the eighteenth. Think about how we're gonna use that, might bring in ordinance for, or a proposal, some proposals for that we can. Do, one, of course, maybe make up some of the three point nine million, maybe we put some away for.
Cause next year.
Matches and or also bond payments, that's what I was trying to think of for the Harvard, so there's lots of things, maybe you guys could think about some things, send me some emails if you have some ideas. On that same note, Denali has made two announcements that they have match grants, so they're giving out, they're willing to pay matches for grants. So I'll be applying for that for Second Street, I need to read, there's two different ones, I need to figure them out, I haven't taken, I haven't been able to read them. We are also, on another grant note, getting very close to being done with Merad and the project. We have one final payment to turn again, that we're gonna get moving. Merad won't release our funds until we pay the contractor. So, guess we'll give the contractor, and we'll work through that, we have a short punch list, a lot of it is. Getting the O N M manuals finalized, getting the red lines on the drawings finalized, so office work, we are still doing some electrical, but we're moving with that, and the electrician is back. So hopefully, we will get that three million back into, let me put a little crazy in that, so Merad has now said that they want to put the million dollars into the last final payment, which would be great, so we're hoping that will happen. If not, we'll have to do another little bit of a process, so we're keeping our fingers crossed for the last payment. The finance department has been working hard on Q and A's pamphlets and examples for the new tax code, they're working with Holly and trying to get prepared for that to come, we will have some things out on the web, we'll do. In the free future, not like January first, we'll try to get some mug up type meetings where we can talk about the tax things and answer questions, but one thing we are gonna do is. Have a, have them send in questions, so if somebody comes in, they put it in writing, and then we'll respond to it in writing, and then we'll say we'll have it for other times. I met with the school district, Melvin and I met with them, they have a monthly, I think, safety meeting, and so this one, we talked about what's the next steps for, you know, planning for the high school upgrade. For, you know, what do we need from city council, and we need to get more, and I think, you know, just keeping everyone in the loop, and then when it gets a little bit more firm, you can. Have some review that's needed, and then I will be going to AML, I'm gonna leave Monday, and I have, I'm going to some. AML co-report meetings, there's multiple ones, there are, there are groups that are trying to work as larger. Groups to get grant money and move through projects and get documents that will have support grants, one of them is safer as for all, so that'll be a good run on. And thriving communities, I'm drawing a blank on the last one, but I think it'll be really good, it's good to be up there in person to meet with those guys. And then on Friday the thirteenth, I don't know.
Friday.
Friday the thirteenth, but I'm flying home to Oregon for some, to help my family out with some medical, even I'll be out till after the first of the year. But I will be working on and on, I'll be calling, definitely calling in for the eighteen, we'll see what we do with the first. And that's all I got.
Okay, any questions for Sam, comments?
Yeah, I'm just gonna bring Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I guess, where are we at with open decisions, I never heard, we filled some more, which is great, and as we go into the year, it's kind of looking to.
Yeah, so the.
Where are we ending the year at?
We have a planner, very excited, December ninth is our first day. We had the D M B, they pulled their application, we have a new. Walker letter out, we had a second candidate, I have not heard if that has been accepted, but it does push us back. Cause they have to attend training, they have to get background checks, so I'm checking with Andy and Derek tomorrow, and we'll update our release where we said we would be.
I know.
I know, but, but we'll get there, at least we have somebody in the works, and they seem excited, so we'll move through that, it's just gonna take some time. And I know, so no police officer. Samantha has some interviews to do for the rec. A admin, rec admin. And.
Oh, Ken just joined and did like stuff.
Okay. I don't know, yeah.
Streets.
We have, oh, yes, we have an interview tomorrow for streets.
Oh, wow.
Good.
So glad you asked this, President.
I know, I heard so much. So we'll see where that goes.
Yeah, it looks like we've come a long way.
We've come a very long.
Thank you for that. Any other questions for Sam? Okay, thanks, Sam, congratulations to the water firm there. Once again. Uh, where are we at, city clerk's report?
So the first thing I wanted to do was, the clerk's department is lucky enough to have filled a deposition recently, and Colette Gilmore is in the audience tonight, I think. Most of you have met her, and maybe some of the ones on the phone may not have yet, or on Zoom, I should say. And Colette is doing an amazing job, and I'm very happy so far, and there's a lot going on in our office, because the assessors are here. And Martins, if you guys remember Martins, we usually have Arnie here, but Martins is here also, and he did some training with Colette on the Mars software system today, so that was great. And they are, we have a little bit of an ad out that says that they may be out and about taking pictures to update the Mars database with the new pictures. And I think they're here until Friday, or maybe Saturday. We've been setting dates and schedule for the twenty-five tax year, all based on code with the board utilization meeting, and then working backwards to where we'll. Put out assessment notices and the like, and give the thirty day notice, and give the dice time to work out the appeals. And of course, the other big thing happening about that time of year is the election, I have the first ad out, declaration of candidacy opens on the seventeenth, but of course, this ad is about how to register to vote for anybody who isn't registered yet to vote. And this will start playing in the newspaper and website facing, all kinds of things. And I'm sure, you know, I'm glad that Sam is gonna be away, but I want her to not work the whole time, because I'm sure she has nine million hours of leave to burn, and hopefully, she'll be able to relax a little bit while she's gone as well. So if we wind up canceling the January first one, which it appears as though we will, that might give her a little bit of free time, which I'm. That is all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, any questions for the clerk? Okay.
Can you hear you?
I'm sorry, I don't know why I don't need it.
Okay.
Oh, you know what, one more quick thing, so Kristen is in Anchorage now, and then she'll go, I think, to AML for a few days, Wendy is going up, Colette is actually going up, and then Sam will be there. And Cheryl will be there, so it's nice, we'll have a little representation, and Wendy's bringing up some pins, Colette designed and ordered some pins, and Kristen will give you a few pins, cause those are those nice, nice things to share with other communities and bring them home yourself.
And we also got scholarships for a lot of the travel.
Oh, yes. And or and or Miles, because we have easy business, and we use it.
Okay, good. Anything else for the clerk? Moving on into correspondence. About the letter support for. Central Air Service. We do that every year.
Sure, every couple of years, it's a pretty easy, they give us a letter, if you want to make it for your signature and.
Does anybody on council have an objection to supporting that A S?
No.
Designation.
Business owners and community members should do their own letters.
I did send to Kathy at the chamber, so at least she sent it around, and I think Dr. Sanders said she put one in.
And I know the school is always.
Yeah, it's always doing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This is a, a super picky little point, but if you have a, a way in your letter of distinguishing between us and southeast, like, the draft letter lumps everybody into southeast, and I keep wanting to say, but we're not southeast, so.
Yeah.
Like I said, super picky, but.
Sure.
If it's an opportunity, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Sherman.
Thank you, I was just wanting to, does the resolution hold more weight than a letter of support?
When did, when was the deadline on the letter?
I think that, I think it's the day after our meeting, so what, more?
So we could do.
Yeah, the nineteenth.
Sure. I think it's the nineteenth.
This is the thirteenth.
Oh, yes.
My only thought was that we could personalize a resolution a little bit more, and. And there was enough time, and maybe we could point out a few of our, not peculiarities, but. Things that Alaska Airlines means to our community in particular. Thank you.
That's the third.
Yeah, but that's, if you want Alaska Airlines to turn it in, if you, final due date is December nineteenth for any comments.
Okay.
We could do that, we could do a letter and a resolution.
Can, can anybody and everybody send me a thought of a whereas, and that would help me put it all together. And that would be helpful.
And I guess. Okay, anything else on the correspondence? Okay, moving along then to ordinance twelve point five, an ordinance of the council of the city of Fort Valdezca, authorizing the transfer of two hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars from the permanent fund grant project from. One oh four nine oh one five seven three four zero to the grant administration, transfer from permanent fund four oh one three nine zero four nine nine. Nine eight to pay the second street upgrade project and white shed pedestrian path project grant matches for F Y twenty-five, this is second reading, will require. Roll cover of the least. Four, which is.
No, this is the permanent fund, so this requires seven.
Oh, seven, sorry.
Seven, yes, is one of which can be the mayor if we get one note, since we have all seven.
So, there are motion for that thing?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Councilmember Sherman.
Thank you, yeah, I mean, this is something that we have talked about before, it's the. Second reading, these are projects we've talked about for years in terms of upgrades that are happening to Second Street and to the, a bike path on White Shed Road, and I realize this is just an, an amount that we have to match. For this year, and we will need to do subsequent matches for next year, but. The amounts of the grants coming in are pretty substantial, I think it's nine million for one of them and eight million for the other one, so I feel like, and I know the city's gonna have to put in more than three hundred thousand dollars, but. It's, it's still, our contribution is still leveraging millions to be spent to upgrade the infrastructure in our community, so I support this.
Thank you, Councilmember Sherman.
Sure, echoing the comments of Councilwoman Smith. And again, I would just say, these are projects that have been community vetted, and everyone's in support of them, and they've been a long time coming, so.
You loser.
She did say she's been having trouble keeping the, keeping up with the connection, so yeah, maybe she'll be back in a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I was just gonna echo Councilman Smith's comments and these are projects that have been vetted through the community. And I think we should just move forward with the match.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Baylor?
Yeah, I support the whole project, but I guess my question would be, why not? Why not leave the money in the permanent fund, leave it invested and take it out of the seven hundred thousand we just received?
Councilmember Kinsman?
I can say, similar question that if not, at the very least, you know, we can, if we're gonna do this, we've put the energy and effort into it, then. Here mark a portion of that fish funds, we go back into the permanent fund, equal that, but yeah, I'm supportive, I'll support it. And I know that's a separate conversation to have, so it's just my two cents.
Adoption, for sure, councilmembers Astro?
Uh yes, I support it as um as it is, as it stands today.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Rainey?
Um yeah, I support this, we've talked about it, we've got, you know, timelines coming forward. This has been around the table, I think I'd rather see this happen and then have the conversation about putting some of that money into the permanent fund from the fish. When we have that conversation, but I think we are to the point now where I'd like to move forward with this as well.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Jones?
Yeah, sorry I'm late, I must have missed something with the, the fish discussion, but uh no, I support this.
Hey, anybody else want to run too?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just, just forward to the city manager if I can, um you, you were saying, when are our grant matches due, you said it was later in next year?
Yes, I can't remember when White Shed is due, but I'm.
Well, and they're at two different times then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, two separate ones.
But not January one?
No.
Okay.
Perfect. Anybody else? Hey, Susan, can you call a roll please?
Yes, on adoption of ordinance twelve twenty-five, Kathy Sherman. Who's on? Uh Dave Zastro?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Wendy Rainey?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Kristen Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Al Setche is not back, so will you, you vote on this?
Yes.
You'll vote yes?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion carries then?
Okay, thank you. Um. Resolution twelve twenty-four thirty-six, a resolution of the council, the city of Cordova, Alaska, adopting city services fees. Rates and charges for the twenty twenty-five calendar budget.
I'm going to accept it.
I'll second. Councilmember Rainey?
Yeah, I think um, you know, we worked long and hard on this, um. The fee schedule seems to be uh where I'd like to see it and there's been a lot of effort done, I think we've had tons of conversations and I'd just like to move forward with it at this point.
Yeah, thank you, councilor Kinsman, yeah, I can handle that and.
One, we haven't had any real public comment contrary to it, so that's hopefully something, uh we've had a lot of conversation and.
Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I uh, I support this all except for there's the new drive down dock fee. That starts after two hours of use, I uh, after having the dock be finished and seeing it in practicality, um. I think that in the winter time, this fee is inappropriate, when it's the only water fill in the harbor and uh. Water flows relatively slow and it can take longer than two hours just to fill your boat, so. I would like to see this modified, I don't know if now is the appropriate time to do that or if we need to bring this back up and. Pending agenda um and modify it before next winter, but. Um I have concerns over that and think it should be polled and sent back to harbor commission for reevaluation. Now that the dock is actually constructed.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I think it's probably appropriate, that fee schedule can be modified at any time. So, but the, the harbor commission did approve what we've got in here and. Uh that's probably the appropriate spot for uh requested change to be made through the harbor commission and council. Uh you were, Kristen Smith?
Thanks, yeah, I support this, I, I really appreciate the thoroughness of the, of the fee schedule, you just, um I, I know we've been over this several times, but when I was reading through it today, I thought, wow, there's. Uh a lot of work that went into putting this together and, and, and capturing and documenting all the different fees and thinking about the rates and I just appreciate the work that went into that, thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers Astro?
Yeah, as previously mentioned, a lot of work has already gone into this, so uh yeah, I'm gonna support this uh as it is today.
Hey, councilmember Baylor?
Yeah, support it.
Councilmember Sherman?
Is not back.
Oh, she's not back here?
Must have lost her.
Okay.
And now I see her.
Kathy, do you have comments on the fee schedule? Are you quite there yet, Kathy?
Yes, I'm back, sorry.
Okay, did you have any comments on the resolution twelve twenty-fourth of the fee schedule?
Thank you, no, I'm in favor of it as is and I was just gonna respond to Councilman Jones's suggestion and I think that it's. Uh something that should be discussed by the harbor commission, um and it could be brought back to us in next year's fee schedule. And there are probably a lot of new changes and new things in the harbor that might need to be readjusted in the future, but for now, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you, anybody want to run too? Okay, this roll call vote, oh go ahead, councilmember Jones?
Uh I, that's fine, I'll save it for pending agenda.
Okay, thank you, anybody else, last chance? Okay, um.
Yeah, let's do a roll call vote on this, um on the fee schedule, resolution twelve twenty-four thirty-six, Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Wendy Rainey?
Yes.
Dave Zastro?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
And Ken Jones?
Yes.
Motion care seventy-two?
Okay, thank you, resolution twelve twenty-four thirty-seven, resolution of the council, the city of Cordova, Alaska, adopting an operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And appropriating the amount of nineteen million six hundred twelve thousand three hundred one dollars.
I move to accept resolution twelve twenty-four thirty-seven.
Do a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Rainey?
Once again, a lot of work went into this, um I appreciate. Um the response from the public with the cuts that we had to make and um. It was a difficult, some difficult decisions needed to be made and. I'm glad we could come together with the hard work from the city manager and Cheryl and uh all the city departments, so I appreciate everybody's hard work, I'm ready to move forward with this.
Thank you, councilor Kinsman?
Yeah, I guess I'm in support of it, there's. Hopefully, with having some, I guess, increased support in the finance department, and I look forward to. Um uh as has been mentioned, some quarter, more. More reporting and I think a lot of that's probably just gonna come in the form of quarterly reporting, see where uh. Um how we're trending, how we're tracking, what needs to be adjusted, I think that will pay dividends for next year's budget cycle, but with uh what was handed. To the city manager and staff, I think we've, we've done a good job, um I guess I'm just gonna put some. Comments out there for public right now, that we're, we're passing a nearly two million dollar budget.
Twenty.
Twenty, sorry, thank you, twenty million. Thankfully not two hundred million, two twenty million, not two million, twenty million dollar budget, um and of that, if you paid attention to any of our conversations. A not insignificant amount of that was a thirty, nearly thirty-five, around thirty-five percent increase. In, and really health, health insurance, I mean, so when you look at these numbers, that, that, that was a piece of a twenty million dollar budget, that's what we're passing. And we did have some public comment, I would, would think that there should be some more, but. Twenty million dollar budget.
Thank you, councilmember Jones?
Uh no, no comment really, thanks.
Okay, councilmember Baylor?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it, but I'm, to say I'm disappointed would be an understatement. No, I, I've mentioned this several times, I go back three years ago with this current city manager, or the city manager we had, Dan Helen. We were balancing our budget of COVID funds and through other federal funds. And I said that this isn't gonna work, what are you gonna do, you're spending more and you're taking in. And oh, we'll, we'll find the money, we'll deal with it, you know, and those things ran out in two years, we'll, we'll deal with it in three years, you know. Well, we dealt with it by raising sales tax by one percent, we dealt with it by putting another three cents per gallon warfage on fuel. And we've upped the, the uh property tax a, a little bit. The bottom line is we're spending more than we're taking in. And some hard choices need to be made for next year's budget, you, you're just, we're at a tipping point, you can't keep raising taxes on, on folks. And uh some choices need to be made and I think council needs to start looking at these choices tomorrow, don't wait till next October and then say, oh, what are we gonna do? And one, for instance, is the ski hill, now we had a discussion with the ski hill, we did cut their budget a little bit. But I mentioned to them, I said, you know, you need to look at your five oh one C three, maybe get into, get that arranged. The response we got, I don't know if, if was accurate, because the person that they were supposed to be working with hadn't been contacted. They also suggested that they maybe look at the Cordova Community Foundation. They need to go out and try to find other grants and other money, money is not just come to the. City as a pity bank, piggy bank, and that's what they're gonna do next year. And they're gonna be doing it next year because. I, I gotta think that all of you would agree to that, that they need to go out and find monies, but not one person on council. Either acknowledged it or reinforced that, so. That person's gonna go back to their board and gonna say, hey, we're all good, when we need money, we'll just come back and ask for more, we can't afford that. We can't afford multiple people down at the chamber, you know, that should be a, it shouldn't be a department, it should be a one employee. We're gonna have to look at our parks and rec, we're gonna have to look at our library museum, we're gonna have to look at all of our services and make some tough decisions because. Your next year's your, your wages for your city employees are gonna go up for your contract. Expenses are gonna go and we can't keep coming back to the tax well, we have to slow this thing down and we gotta make some decisions. So I'm not gonna be here next year, but I'd urge you to start looking now, don't wait till next October. And say, oh, the sky's falling or project that we're gonna make more money than what we're bringing in, so. Uh that's uh, that's my comments, I think we're gonna be in trouble next year if we don't do something.
Okay, thank you, councillor, uh councilmember Astro?
Yeah, I uh, you know, listening to uh councilmember Baylor, I, I would agree, there's definitely not, no more money coming in than the next few years ahead of us, so. I definitely hear those warnings and something we should definitely heed, um I'd like to say though, I, I am uh really happy how the, Sam is our manager, certainly Cheryl and finance. Staff in general did a fantastic job of running everything down we asked them to do. Um I do think though, that some of the decisions we did make with revenue for this budget um were. You know, I think calculated risk, but I would like to see more real time tracking of revenue throughout the year so that we know we are on track with what we think we're going to be, so hopefully we can do more of that. But uh in general, I am in support of it.
Thank you, councillor Sherman?
Sure, thanks, um yeah, yeah, I mean, everybody's making very good comments and um. Councilman Baylor's points, and it echoes like we've heard it year after year after year from him and we have and we should all um pay attention to that and heed that. I'm not quite sure where we could make more cuts without affecting services in the community and I wish the community would participate more in public hearings um for the budget. I mean, we're all at the meetings, in the work sessions and the public has an opportunity to comment. Um I agree that some of the entities could look for other sources of funding. I'm not quite sure how the city can help them, but it takes initiative from everybody else. But um as the budget stands, I'm in favor of it. Um and I'm on council for another year, so. I will be thinking about that and I do hope that we can have um revenue. Quarterly reports so that we can see where we're tracking. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith?
Thanks, um yeah, I, I agree with all, all the comments that have been made already, I don't have a ton to add, I do wanna say. I mean, I, I. Totally recognizing that we have a revenue problem, I understand that, but um there's been some Facebook chatter about the amount of property tax and that's gone up over the years. And I looked at, I, it was a six year period, I wanna say from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two, I, I think that was it, somewhere in there, um but when you do the math. For those property tax revenues that were collected, they were either very close to what we've budgeted for next year or the same as in inflation adjusted dollars, so. I don't think we've significantly increased um. Property tax, I know we changed the assessment, so maybe I'm not thinking of it straight, but the to, total overall dollar amount is the same or. A very small amount more. Um so yeah, and I just wanna thank the staff for, for the work that they did to put this budget together and. Let's, yeah, it would be good to see more. Uh current reporting going forward, I think that's, hopefully that's part of the benefit of getting a finance director. Um and we still have work to do, thank you.
Thank you, anybody want round two? Chance? So roll call vote, Susan, or call a roll?
Yes, on the budget. Um Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Dave Zastro?
Yes.
Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Wendy Rainey?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman? No, we lost our mind. He is absent for a moment, so we'll roll six oh on that, who, who seconded that, I did not write it?
Uh the second was.
Kins.
Kinsman.
Casey, okay. And the motion carries on the budget is approved.
Okay, thank you. We have no unfinished business now, I guess, we finish the budget.
Yeah.
New miscellaneous budget, council concerns of mayor's appointments to fill vacancies on city boards and commissions, um. There weren't any extra applicants, so. I would appoint Deborah Adams to library board, Bonnie Harrison and Chris Boland to the planning commission, Kelsey Hayden and Erin Hanson. To the Parks and Rec Board. At this time?
So the motion is to concur with those appointments, if somebody wants to make that motion?
Excuse me?
Uh I'll, I'll, I'll move to concur with the mayor's appointments.
I'll second you.
Okay, it's been moved to second in the discussion? All those in favor of concurring with those appointments, say aye?
Aye.
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 Close? Motion carries, we are still looking for two harbor commission spots. And two historic preservation commission spots, are either of those uh. I know the historic preservation has some criteria on some of their seats.
Yeah. Uh I think it's the um professional member. And the historical society member, who were the two that came?
For potential.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
You're right.
So Nancy Bird is standing a break from the historical preservation commission, so she was. Really looking for someone who wants to take the lead on it because she's been kind of like the staff, do it.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, so let's keep our eyes open for those, uh next week we ought to be able to find a couple of guys willing to serve on the harbor, for sure, so we'll work on, on that. Okay, uh, pending agenda, CIP list, calendar, elected individual lists. Pending agendas, anybody?
Mister Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Councilor Baylor.
Yeah, I'd like to maybe put on the agenda, take another look at our our new home construction uh incentive that we put on for single-family homes. And the reason I wanna do that is this, I don't know if you guys are aware, but the state has now coming out with a new program of theirself. It's called the New Home Construction Rebate Program. So it's ten thousand dollars to Alaskan new home buyers. So if you buy a newly constructed home, and the newly constructed, I think it's newly constructed home, there's a ten thousand dollar rebate. So that kinda gets back to what some of you on council have been talking about is some incentives for, you know, new home buyers and and maybe low income. So my way of thinking is it doesn't, we don't need to give up city tax dollars if the state's gonna kind of come in and fill that role, so maybe we can put that on next agenda and have that discussion.
I'm sure next agenda is the best one to put it on, but we could certainly the agenda, but Sam will be gone on the next agenda. Um, but yeah, certainly something we want to talk about. The other thing that I'm concerned about with that is that for the last couple of legislature um last couple of legislatures in in Alaska, they've they're been weighing pretty strongly raising that hundred fifty thousand dollar senior tax exemption. And uh, that might have some, some, if they raise that uh three hundred thousand or five hundred thousand, what would that do to us? So uh, worth having on there again, but not sure if next agenda would is was council's pleasure on that.
I'd like to see it come back, but it doesn't have to be next agenda.
Let's put that on.
Just putting it on pending agenda, I love.
Yeah.
Um.
Anything else, Councilor? Kinsman, did you have something? I did. Going along, this is more upcoming, I probably would fit under upcoming meetings, if there's been a lot of interest and appetite for um updated guy, budget. See how we're tracking, quarterly tracking, and I would almost like to see us do a work session, quarterly work session tied to how we're tracking. Doesn't have to be a long one. We can work with the city manager and staff, but I think I would like to spread out some of our eight meetings that we had in October, November. If we can do that throughout the year would be really, really nice to me, and I believe some of staff will and other councils will agree with that, but I think that would allow us to be proactive instead of reactive like we're this year, so that's if there's that's my suggestion, quarterly work session, just to track where we're at with the budget. Yeah, I think so. First one, maybe in April.
Okay.
That that sounds good. I know that the finance department has their, and the finance department has their fellow of the metal trying to get caught up and get through things and uh I know their goal is to get us more timely reports, so. And their reports are great. I just like to have an opportunity to chat about the content of everything, so. Okay, sounds good. Oh, uh, Councilor Sherman?
Your hand is up, Kathy.
Is that cursor?
Oh, didn't mine?
Anybody else have anything for the pending agenda?
Yeah, Mister Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Council Jones.
Yeah, I would like to see us uh talk about that drive-down dock fee and and possibly sending that back to the harbor commission. I I don't wanna see us wait and just let it ride for an entire year and bring it back next year. I think that this we need to, we need to talk about this again. Um, if it goes into effect, it's gonna really hamper various vessel operators and industries that need to utilize that dock for more than two hours at a time in the winter. I think the two-hour time limit in the summer is totally appropriate, and that was kinda what all the discussions surrounded is we didn't want people tying up the dock while other people are trying to load, but in the winter, when there's less use and it's the only place to get fresh water, it's also the only place for shoulder-season fishermen to sell their crab or shrimp or, you know, whatever over the dock when the canneries are shut down. Um, that can take longer than two hours to do, so I think that we need to look at either eliminating the fee in the wintertime months only or have it be a longer time period in the wintertime months, and I'd like to see that get sent to the harbor commission for review and then come back to us.
Yeah, I I I think that's where it needs to start, is the harbor commission. And uh, it doesn't do us much good to talk about it, because we're gonna say, well, does the harbor commission have to say? But the harbor minister is here, and I think he's got some executive authority on some, using some common sense on, you know, nobody's down there and he's, you know, I mean, he's, he's got some, some, some authority with that, with that fee as it gets implemented, so.
Yeah.
But I, I think it needs to be at the harbor commission. I think Tony's, Tony's here, he's got the message. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we will see some things as we go through our first winter with the harbor, and we'll see some things that may need to change, but the bottom line is that brand-new shiny harbor needs to pay for itself, and I'm not willing to make everything free in the winter just because it's a little harder to deal with it. So we have a brand-new facility that needs to pay for itself. I think slipholders with that two-hour, that two-hour free time limit is totally manageable, and we'll see what the harbor commission has to say.
Anything else on the pending agenda? What do we got for the we got the impound lot purchase agreement?
Correct.
I think we got an agreement on that. Thank you for
Yes.
all those who worked on that.
We'll have a resolution putting the ballot prop or changing the charter for the planning director. Uh, we'll have the CIP list, and we're already the one that uh, we'll bring it just with a fresh number, and in the same form it's in now, and then you guys, you know, you'll see her memo, and you'll have some idea what what you may want to add to the CIP list or change an order of the CIP list. That's what the memo will say, basically.
The
The
Just disaster money?
Which will be what? You think just a discussion item? No, action to, she's gonna bring that some form.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? How does participation? Anybody still? With staff, people here allowed to talk, you know? Anything you wanna chat about? It's not, so here we go. Uh, council comments. Councilmember Baylor?
Yeah, well, good meeting. Thanks for everybody being there. Um, I'm kind of excited about this uh this rebate program that the state's coming up with. It kinda checks all the boxes. You have to build energy efficiency and and it has to be Alaska resident, so. I'll send that link to, on the public announcement to Susan. If anybody's interested, they could maybe get educated on it, see what they got to say. I think council should maybe think about, you know, comfort, yeah, putting a letter together addressing to the Ski Hill board and just kind of encouraging them to go out and look at the other sources of funding and maybe maybe follow too with getting on that five oh one C three, because I, I think if we don't kind of encourage that and push it a little bit, I don't think it's gonna happen, so. I think it'd be wise for council to get together and, so maybe think about that, maybe the next meeting we could come up with something. Other than that, everybody have a great holiday. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Jones.
Yeah, um I I share some of uh Councilmember Baylor's sentiments on the budget. Um, I heard some comments earlier that our property tax hasn't really gone up when you account for inflation, but I, if you look at twenty twelve to now, it's almost double. Um, that's just off the city's own numbers on the website, so. Um, I'm not sure that our dollars have devalued in half in that amount of time, but maybe they have. Um, as far as the harbor paying for itself, I heard that comment earlier. Um, you know, all the harbor fees went up. Part of the service we're supposed to get as harbor fee holders is to be able to fill fresh water, and so when you have uh takes, you know, longer to fill fresh water than you have for a free timeframe, you're just getting double charged, so you can fill your boats, kinda. I don't know, I don't agree with it. It's also curbing, curbing uh economy, you know, the part of getting that harbor was to increase efficiency and uh to grow our economy, and that's why we got the grant for the drive-down. And then we turn around and start telling people, oh, you're gonna have to pay fifty bucks an hour if you wanna sell your crab over the dock here, or whatever. It's, I don't know. I don't think it's the right thing for us to be doing in the winter when it's not getting used anyway. And uh as far as the budget, I don't like the uh, the cut to the chamber and the cut to the Ski Hill. Um, I would have liked to see more cuts to the salaries, wages, and health insurance, because that's where the problem lies. That's where the cost overruns come from every single year. Every time we get a new new uh bargaining agreement, seems like we have to raise taxes again, so I don't see that changing anytime soon. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Zastro.
Yeah, great meeting. Um, I'd like to just echo uh what Councilmember Kinsman uh pointed out, a possible quarterly workshop meeting. I think that would be fantastic, be tracking in real time for all of us council members on how we are doing with the budget. Um, the budget, yeah, it is what it is. It's, it it, everything was a hard choice, and it's certainly not gonna get any easier. Um, but I think as long as we stay on top of it as best as we can, hopefully we can blot some of the uh, some of the pain. Um, I just wanna note too, um, the uh city manager report, a lot of great things going on in that report, not least of which our water department's uh excellence award. Um, I haven't been in Cordova as long as some of you there in the room and online, but uh over thirty years, and we've always had amazing water. So um, I'm not surprised. It's just uh, it it's something that we've always been really blessed with, so really happy to hear that they got that award. Uh, that's all I have.
Hey, thank you, Councilor Sherman.
Yeah, sorry for the in and outs tonight. Um, I just wanted to also echo, I have been traveling a little bit this month, and the water in so many places just really sucks, and um there's water shortages, and you can't drink the water, and I'm watching people buy bottled water, so we are so blessed and so lucky to have good water in Cordova and a great crew that maintains the system, so they deserve that reward, and I, I hope that um there's some definite acknowledgement in the community for that. Um, yeah, it's a good meeting. Their budget is tough, always, every year, no matter what. Um and I just do think we need to be diligent in following along as council members um and asking the hard questions throughout the year, not waiting till the budget season arrives and following through with some of the talks and ideas and um even potential cuts that we've talked about, so um I think it's a matter for us as counselors to be diligent um in working with the staff in the, for the future year. And that's all I have, and I'm really sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight. Um, little bit of delay here, but I'll be back on Friday.
Hey, thank you, Kathy. Uh, Councilor Kinsman? Just gonna, had to top my lesson, I'm just gonna go with it, not gonna take it away as, as a kudo of the bars. Echo what Councilmember Sherman said. I also was out of town for about almost two weeks in several different states and witnessing the same thing and tasting water in different places, and we have really been watering here. And people that I bring up comment on the same thing, and I even challenge them to not buy a bottle of water from the store and just try our tap water, and it's a farm concept to a lot of people to put their trust in the pipes and their water department, but we are very fortunate to be able to do that, so thank you to our water department and well-deserved recognition. Um, another comment I had was just going back as staff is working on kind of the Q and A fact sheets for, and and it's not even I I put down redefine, refine, re-emphasis on ourselves tax. I mean, most of it was just a re-emphasis of what already was there. There's a couple of things that are redefined, and that's fine. Um, but my ask for the public is if you have questions, please submit them to staff in in writing, because I, if you have a question, very likely someone else in the meeting has the same question or a similar question, and let's just uh help perpetuate getting the correct information out. And so everyone's on the same page. Um with that, uh, I guess I'll just do a, a thank you to Council, Councilmember Baylor, and it probably feels pretty good to you to be in your last budget cycle, and uh, I appreciate your, your insight and uh and and your words of caution, so thank you. Hey, thank you, Councilor Smith.
Not much I can add to all the great uh things that have been brought up already, so um I would just echo the um kudos to the water department for their hard work and how um, yeah, fortunate we are to have such good quality drinking water and lots of it from all of our surface, surface water collection. And yeah, thanks to the staff for a budget set, for a great uh budget cycle. Um, yeah, and thanks for a good meeting.
Thank you, Councilor Rainey.
Um, yeah, I have to echo everybody. Thanks to the water department. I see them on a daily basis, I have something that everyone know about ten feet from me, um and uh, that they do a great job, so I wanna appreciate their work that they get um, when they come, especially in the winter time when they have to come out to Oregon, because we don't make it easy on them. Um, I appreciate uh Mister Baylor and all the time and energy he's put into budgets, and I do take his words to heart. I think this budget cycle was a wake-up call to some of the nonprofits in the community about the fact that the city um cannot be their sole support. Um, you know, we will give them money when we can, but it's time for them to be looking uh outside the box for their own funding, um and I don't see that changing, so they may wanna be looking towards that as well as we look towards future income sources. Um, and thanks, Mister Baylor, for all your service. It's been a pleasure most of the time serving with you. Um you will be missed at the budget meetings from some people, I'm sure. Um and thanks to Mister Kinsman. I do, Councilman Kinsman, I agree, we need to have those quarterly updates. I think that will make it a lot less painful when we have budget cycles, so. Um, thanks to staff for another, another good meeting.
Okay, thanks, everybody, for their work on the budget. Uh thanks for always getting online, those that have to get online when they have to. It's, it's important to to participate, even if it is by phone and and difficult, I know the time zones, it's getting pretty late, probably where some of you are at, so thank you for that. Uh thanks Susan for the randomized list. I don't have to randomize in my brain any order, so if you're wondering what order you're calling, I've got a, got a randomized list for each different topic that we talk about, so. Yeah, so I don't have to worry about it, so. Anyway, thank you all, and uh, Sam, hope you have a uh little bit of relaxing trip, but I hope that medical all goes, goes well for your family there. Uh we will hear you on the phone. Anyway, but try, try not to work too much here, get a little bit of vacation. We don't have an executive session, correct?
No.
So with our business being concluded, we will resume the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Senator Corey.